My name is Christina Tesor-Durkson. I was born at Milton District Hospital. I've lived in Milton my entire life. Originally on a farm on Appleby Line and then at Milton Heights, Peru area where my parents still reside. I'm happily married for 20 years to a small business owner who owns a computer shop in Milton, Chris Durkson. Some of you may know him. We have four children, the oldest being 22 years old, the youngest is 13. And I worked as a funeral director at Nick Percy Cooker Funeral Home on Main Street in Milton. My license still hangs on the wall, so if you do have to go there, unfortunately, you'll see my license on there. And I'm also a lawyer, so with a focus on real estate, land planning, and wills and estates. And I work with a firm out of Cambridge, but I run an office in Milton on Bronte Street. And the reason I decided to run was because I've had an interest in politics my entire life. I have an undergraduate degree in political science. And when the kids were little, it was busy enough having law school, a law practice, a marriage, a house, a dog, all that good stuff. Now that they're a little bit older, I've found that I've got free time to pursue the passions I've had since I was a kid. And those passions include governance, leadership. And I've been told that I am a natural leader. I'm not used to bragging like that, sorry. But I've been told I have leadership skills. And with the professional background I have, I feel like this is a great time for someone like me to step forward, to bring my skills as an advocate from my client base to the residents of Ward 1. I think with the complexity of the issues we're going to be facing, the combination of the wards, I think we need to have representation that has a skilled background, a skilled professional background, and proper advocacy and approachability as well. Thank you so much for coming, and I appreciate your attention.
Hello, everyone. My name is Namu Chotri, and I'm running for local councillor for Ward 1. And I've been living in this ward for the... I'm living in Canada for the past 14 years, and living in Milton for the past 10 years. And whereas my education concerned, I did my bachelor's degree in political science, and further I did my master's in English, and then further I did sales technicality. And then I further studied in hotel management. Whereas Ward 1 is concerned, I decided to run from Ward 1. And the beauty of Ward 1 is that it is the microcosm of Milton. It is divided in the rural as well as urban as compared to the other wards. And whereas for the past 10 years, I have seen the rural resident, they have the feeling that they are really deprived from their rights, which is actually true. I certainly agree for that, because they are paying the same taxes with the urban people are paying. And in rewards, they are not getting the same facilities with the urban people are getting for that. So I strongly advocate for that, that if they are giving the same tax, they should be giving the same facility for that. I have seen they are... They are not getting that much high-speed internet, or which we should strive for that. I've seen the quarry issue in the rural area. And there are several issues which is not debatable in two minutes. I'm open that I can come anytime and I can discuss in debate as well. But we should all be on the same ground, and we should agree for that, that the rural area, they are paying more taxes as compared to the urban. Whereas my background is concerned, I belong to Chotri's family, and I can feel this pain because the Chotri's are associated with the rural family. So I came from the home of region, from the rural family. I've seen my grandparents, they were doing the farming, and I can feel how they feel like that. Just one more.
No, no, you get it in your head.
I really appreciate that I had the opportunity to speak with you in person. I met thousands of residents in Ward...
I'll take this off your end, Mr. D. That's a you-off it?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for your time, and I'm open, you can go to... I don't believe in the website.
Hi, I'm Cindy Lino, and I currently represent this wonderful rural ward of Nassau Guaia. I've been a resident of Nassau Guaia now for 37 years, and I have a mother, a grandmother, a community advocate. And I think you know me as a very strong voice for the rural area of Milton. I am certainly am a member of the Nassau Guaia Community Consultation Committee, and I'm very pleased to work on the roadside cleanup campaign for a couple of decades, the Destination Campbellville Community Association Board, and on the committee that brought us all the musical ride, yes. And I've been a member of the Brookfield School Council, Parent Council, as a community rep for 30 years. So my commitment is absolutely here. We have certainly seen some changes to this ward, things I'm proud of. I'm proud of the expansion of the Brookfield Park. It was my idea to buy the lot that created the new entrance way when that property came up for sale. Village Gate, the corner of Reed Side Road and Campbellville Road. It was my idea to turn that into a community park. I'm a veteran of three quarry fights, the current one, the one in the north, the Hidden Quarry, the one in the south, the St. Mary's Quarry, and now the one right in the middle in Campbellville, the Reed Side Road Quarry. And I sit on the board of the Action Committee. My idea is that we are... My role is to connect people and ideas, and I think my community connections do help that. I work with a group called the CPC for the Rural Internet, that we have any at all, and continue to advocate for better rural internet, which is sadly not entirely up to us. I want to be your strong rural voice as the ward expands. Thank you.
So my name is Chris Jewell. I'm running for town council in Ward 1, like everybody else. I just wanted to tell you a bit about myself. I moved to Milton five years ago with my wife, and we drove around these neighborhoods, and we thought, gosh, what a great place to raise a family. Because that's what we were getting into at the time. We really wanted to settle down, have kids, and we were talking about, this is still the kind of place that you can feel safe riding your bike around the neighborhood or leaving your doors unlocked sometimes. You know, I wouldn't advise that, but you could still do that five years ago. And since that time, we've seen Milton greatly expand. I think it's probably tripled since I moved here. And now we're starting to get into a lot of the problems that you experience in bigger, well, cities, really. We're getting traffic congestion, the taxes are going up. We're losing grants from the province now that we're hitting certain targets with our population. So I felt really motivated to get involved and to do my part. My background outside of politics is construction management. And a lot of people probably don't really know what that entails. So if I could just share that, every day I work with large budgets, similar to our town's budget. Right now, I'm on a relatively small project. And to give you an idea of what the small project budget is, it's $5 million. Other projects I've worked on, it's up to $100, $100 million. I work with staff that can be anywhere from 30 people all the way up to 100 people. I have to work with engineers, I have to plan, I have to execute. These are all skills that we need as we transition from this small town into a city. And I'd really like to be able to use these skills to guide us in that direction and to keep it feeling like the small town we first moved to. So just to wrap it up, my perspective is the most important things are your individual rights, your property rights, your right to freedom of speech, and your right to keep your money in your pocket. And a big thing we have to deal with is the taxes. And I hope you let me do that for your council. I can't really keep track of how many meetings I've been to, but I've attended several meetings, and I like to catch up and watch them online because that's an excellent way to stay informed. So I really urge everybody to also look at the web series that's up for the council meetings, too.
Excellent. What's that?
Web, is that the internet thing?
Yeah, I see it. But yeah, you can watch it online.
It just, everyone freezes once in a while.
I've been attending the meeting not frequently, but since I put forward my name as a councillor, so I was keeping an observing. I used to keep a track, but since I didn't attend the meeting, I was very in touch with my local councillor, local area, what is going on in the town. So when I put my name, then I kept on attending all the meetings. Thank you.
I honestly am trying to think if there was a council meeting that I missed, and honestly, I can't think of one. As a matter of fact, I know that there's been a couple of instances where I've been at conferences in Toronto and have come back specifically for a council meeting, and then gone back in the morning for the breakout sessions of the conference. Because we can't miss a meeting that has issues that matter to us. I've also attended a number of regional council meetings where there have been issues that are particularly of interest to our Milton area.
Last year, when I first contemplated putting my name forward to run, was when I started attending council meetings in earnest. I had been to a few before, either acting for clients or just because there were issues that were of interest. So for, I guess, the past year, I've been attending. I think another important thing to do is maybe read the materials before you go to the meeting. At least skim them and review them. Some of them are quite dense. But when you come to the meeting a little bit prepared, I think it's really helpful because it saves time, and you have more intelligent things to contribute. One of the reasons I started going as well is to see if I actually enjoy doing the work and if I could do the work. And that was kind of a little bit of homework I did before I decided to make the full commitment. Thank you. I grew up with quarry experiences, living at the bottom of Steel's Avenue when Milton quarry was blasting as a kid. I remember the explosions. Our parents, their god, into us about going to Steel's Avenue because of the gravel trucks. So attending the quarry meetings recently has really brought back a lot of those memories. I have been active with the current James Dick quarry issue. I've been attending the meetings. And I've actually, I've put forward my services as a lawyer to provide legal support. So I incorporated the Action Group, so they're now an incorporated nonprofit. I donated my time and expertise, and I also paid for the incorporation fee to get that done. And I've offered to continue to provide legal support in that context. It's really handy to have a lawyer nearby for something like this, especially when they hold charge. Like, how long was that?
Well, being a veteran of the St. Mary's Quarry fight and the James Dick Quarry fight up at the Hidden Quarry in north of Rockwood, I knew immediately who needed to be involved and how to get that together. And we organized a community meeting with over 200 people that attended, and got the community involved. I brought in two veterans from those fights, Gloria Flynn and Doug Trigg, who could offer some questions about how to work on the quarry. And as a result, within 30 days, we have an actual community organization formed, which I think is actually record speed. And certainly, the experience in fighting those quarries had made a big difference. Now, the other thing, I sit on... I have agreed to sit on the board of the Action Group to keep people informed because I do have quite an extensive Nassau Guaia list. Thank you.
This is a very important issue for the rural residents. We understand that quarry, the stone that is being digged from there, it is very expensive, CN Tower, and further, they have utilized that one. But that was old time, there was less population in that area. I would suggest that this is high time, we should seriously think on that. This is the fate of the resident who are living over there. And I would suggest that we stop digging the explosion, and this will... And the impact of the environment on the resident is not good at all. So I'm of the view that quarry and the stone which is being dug from there, it should be stopped, and it shouldn't be left for that. Thank you.
So I've attended the Action Meeting. I also went to the James Dick Quarry, I guess, presentation you might say, at the actual quarry site. And I attended the council meeting where the council voted unanimously to block the quarry. So that was all very positive. In the future, on council, I'd like to work very closely with the Action Group and make sure that we're getting them the information and all the support that they could possibly need to keep this important fight up, because it affects all of us.
Well, some of you might remember that back in 2002, the mayor and I took the horse and buggy, literally, to the Omata offices in Wealth to deliver a proposal for high-speed internet and come to Nassau Guaia for the first time. Up until then, it was strictly dial-in. But our appetites continued to grow. And the faster we get a little bit more service, the faster we eat it up. However, the real problem is, is the bandwidth that the CRTC has allocated is hoarded by the consortium that includes Rogers and Tojito and there's four, anyway. With it, they refuse to use it, and they refuse to share it. So it's like having this eight-lane highway, but only two lanes are allowed for community use. I did appear before the CRTC in the hearings, and we did manage to convince the CRTC to designate high-speed internet as an essential service. This is a step. The real problem... I think the real problem is that we need to be carved out of the GTA bundles. As long as we're included in that GTA bundle, the smaller companies cannot compete. They cannot...
This is a very, very important, very valid question. I really appreciate that. Internet these days is just like the oxygen for life. I've seen the bad internet and the fast internet, that is the requirement of this area. So Cindy might have explained for that. But whereas I can see for our seniors, it's hard for them, they cannot pay their bills. And I've seen people cannot go for online shopping. These are the requirements for the life. So whoever is responsible, whatever, instead of giving a lip service, I don't know whatever is going in the past, this is the right time. Whoever is being elected, they have to address this issue, and they have to address this concern for this ward. Instead of just giving the statement and the name excuses, we should put forward our efforts that we have done, something for Ward 1. Thank you.
I've heard that there's provincial grants available to upgrade this, and that's something that I think we should be tracking. But in the short term, I think we should be looking at opening buildings up, making a few hubs with high-speed access for people to get online and do their business. I think that's really important in the short term. In the long term, hopefully, we work on provincial grants, and we work with our MPPs, and we try to come up with a solution.
I really believe internet access is a basic right. I've spoken to people who have businesses in rural areas. They can't do their payroll. They can't function as a business when their internet is not working. We all know when our computers have crashed, it's like we have our hands cut off. We're really at the mercy of this technology. So it is a multifaceted problem, and it needs to be addressed at a variety of levels of government. But basically, what I would say is that you would need someone to petition and forcefully on your behalf to get the services you need in the area. And look for creative solutions. There's actually a group in rural area in Nova Scotia that got a community cooperative together to basically get high-speed internet brought into their community along with some federal grants. So there's a variety of things we could look at. I think we just have to be creative and tenacious.
So preserving heritage is the most important thing for our generation. I've seen the nations who don't preserve their heritage, they are lost in future. So just like I strongly agree with Mr. Mayor, like, we should be coordinated with the resident or the owners when we are going to preserve or for the heritage of that building. Just like recently, the council, the panel council, they have approved Public Square for the downtown Milton. So if for the Nassau Guaia is going to preserve any heritage for that, so we should be abiding by the same heritage committee and with the conservation of the whole system. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Trant, for bringing up property rights. I think it's extremely important, like you said, that we get the buy-in of the property owner. We get the buy-in of any developer that wants to work on it as well. But I'd like to say, in my mind of work, I've worked on heritage projects. I've worked on the Union Station Train Shed group renewal, for example. And I can attest to the important and great work that heritage committees do. And I will be happy to fully support and work with the heritage community of here. Thank you very much.
I think the preservation of anything that's heritage has to do with, first, with creating an appreciation for what it is. I've been very active with the Nassau Guaia Historical Society, and we can point to a couple of things here that are actually preserved on behalf of our community. These are actually A.J. Parsons originals. And they are now permanently affixed to the wall so that someone having a wedding reception here doesn't suddenly walk off with original artwork. But I think one of the most important things was that I did work with the town. So the new Nassau Guaia Tennis Center boardroom has permanent storage for the Nassau Guaia Historical Society's archives. And they'll be opening this facility for you to research your properties and your families. Some years ago, the champion did a Heritage Matters and a Rural Roots section in their editorial page. And I contributed, I guess, maybe 20 rural groups that spoke about specific areas of Nassau Guaia that need to be remembered and appreciated by all of Milton.
Well, history has a special place in my heart. And I neglected to mention that my political science degree is actually a joint specialist, double major, it's a history and political science degree. And this question actually came up last week, and I'll kind of give the same answer I did. I believe that historical buildings form part of our historical record just the way written documents do, and they need to be preserved. Not just because they're nice to look at or protect, but because they really are tied up in our identity. So much of our identity is wrapped up in our history. And so when we neglect our history, sometimes we lose portions of our identity moving forward. So there's a number of initiatives, actually, in other municipalities under the Heritage Act. There's actually a program wherein you can designate, I believe they're called Heritage Conservation Districts. We don't have any in Milton, but they put a special set of, not necessarily rules, but a special set of factors on a property that a homeowner would have to abide by. Again, I agree they have to be tempered with the rights of property owners to deal with their properties in a way that suits them, at the same time preserving the historical integrity. Thank you. Well, that's a complex question. As you know, we are mandated by the province to continue to grow. That being said, we also need to eat. So I'm not a farmer, I don't have a farming background, and I don't know much about it. When I was working in Wealth, I had a law firm, we did a lot of agricultural law, and I did come into contact with a lot of farming families then. And that's when I learned that farmers are not just farmers. They're chemists, they're mathematicians, they're botanists, they're environmentalists, they're marketers, they're business people, they're... They run the gamut of expertise. So I have a great deal of respect for farming. I also know that myself and my family, my community, we rely on farmers for our sustenance. So it's definitely going to be a balancing act. And I think the province understands this. I think the province knows that we need to have, you know, production within our province to feed our population. It's just a matter of balancing those competing interests against this mandate we have to continue to grow. So I don't have a simple answer, but I can tell you that I'd be in full support of making sure agricultural land is preserved. Thank you.
Well, we at Nassau Guaia are entirely in what the province calls the green belt, which does limit some of, which does protect us from high development as far as home development goes. But we have, our agriculture is really, I would say, too faceted. And one of the aspects is the horse industry, which is really rebuilding at this point. And I think that that's a very important part of how we see Nassau Guaia. Farmers need to have farm gate businesses to help them survive. And we need to have home businesses, home-based businesses to survive as well, keeping us as an active rural community, so that we aren't strictly bedroom. And a lot of things play into that, in allowing people to work from home. High-speed internet becomes one of those issues there. Allowing the home-based businesses. It's a wonderful mix.
This is quite a complex question for me. I would honestly say I have to research for that, so I don't want to... Thank you.
Yes, very complex question. I've known quite a few farmers, I'm very close with a farmer. Actually, we call him Clappy. I mean, we've gone hunting together, we work together, we had coffee together every day. And I could tell you, like, he had a lot of challenges in his life. He would work all day in construction with me, then he'd go home and he'd fix his combine until 3:00 a.m. Or he'd go home and he'd take his beams off until 3:00 a.m., and then he'd get back up and do the whole day over again. So, you know, a lot of what I see farmers dealing with is government kind of encroachment on the family farm. I see a lot of mountain houser coming in, a lot more bylaw complaints coming at farmers for smells and dust and things like that. So I really think it's about trying to create a buffer between farmers and between the government, really trying to keep the government off of farmers' backs and let them do what they do best, and that's produce for all of us. So thank you very much, Alvin. I'm excited for that. Yeah, we hunted way up north, though, and I think there was probably more green than not, to be honest.
Good save.
Yeah, but hunting, it's a tough question because I think a lot of farmers actually need to be out there shooting a lot of the wild game, such as coyotes. But on the other hand, you know, I don't think it should be for sport around here. There are way too many people. So it just has become a safety concern. But again, we really have to balance that with the needs of agriculture to control some of the pesky animal populations as well. So I think it's something that we'll have to look into more, but I don't think people should be driving out for Toronto and then hunting close to your neighborhood.
Yeah, I actually haven't gotten this question before. And my knee-jerk reaction is, no, Bob, we shouldn't have people randomly shooting their guns off where there's people walking dogs and whatnot. So I would think that we need to look at that really closely and make sure, first of all, that people have licenses to be doing this, and that they're doing it in an area that's designated for that type of use, which it doesn't sound like it is. And, you know, to what Chris said, yeah, you know, I remember when I lived up on the farm, you know, the guy would go out at night sometimes, out into where the sheep were with a gun because there'd be a coyote out there or something like that. So, I mean, for defensive property, I could see accommodations being made for that. But that's actually really unsettling to hear that there's people hunting in undesignated areas at any time.
This is an issue that you really find two very polarized views on. Because certainly, the control of our animal population is very important as well. You only have to have a deer jump out to push you off of the road to find out how important it is to control the deer population. That said, I think it needs to be in very controlled areas with very strict rules, and there has to be a way to patrol it, and there has to be a way to report where you think it is not being, where those rules are not being monitored. I think there is a need to have a hunting season. It needs to be well-defined. Residents need to know when it is, so you can be careful about where you're walking. And then you need to have very specific areas. And those hunters who are licensed must respect the rules of where they are hunting.
So I'm of the view, if a farmer is using a gun for the sake of safety, that makes sense. But if you are using a gun as just you are a thrill seeker and you're having your hobby as a hunting in the residential place, I don't agree with that. So there should be a dazie necklace place, like these places are. People should know, we are not going over there, we are not going to give our dogs or the resident shouldn't go over there. There should be certain designated places only for hunting. So thrill seekers and farmers, they're different. If the farmer is using the gun for the sake of coyotes and for the sake of their life because they don't have Dashmore Police over here. Every day, we don't have the police patrolling in the rural area. So if they are having the gun for their safety, I would say they can shoot anywhere for their safety. But if it is just going for the thrill seeking and the people... But if it is just going for the thrill seeking and the people coming from outside the town, they are having fun in the residential area, I would say no, please. Thank you. So I also strongly advocate for better transit. It is not the issue of one rural area, but I have met thousands of people in urban area, they have also the same concern. So we had an experience, a bus going to Campbell, to the urban area, the people who are working over there. So it didn't work out, might be the town has a feeling that they are not meeting the budget. So we are really honored that Mr. M.B. Prime is over here, and I had the opportunity to speak with him on this issue on a few occasions. So we collaborate, if we can, all together, help the people of Milton solving this transit, because transit is the biggest issue, not only urban and rural, for both of them. So I am the strong advocate, I strongly refer Mr. France what he said, I also advocate the same news. Thank you.
Well, transit getting from one place to the other is extremely important for education, for recreation, and for employment. It's particularly important for our youth, and we have to do, we have to work together to find the most cost-effective ways of delivering public transit, both in the urban and in the rural area. I was, I think we're really talking about three segments, I think, of transit. One is the GOAT transit, and we are certainly advocating for all-day GOAT service, which would make a huge difference to our community. For the inter-city, inter-town transit, getting from the high schools to home, to the senior centers and to employment, and for our north-south connections. And the town has applied for a pilot project to look at establishing some of those north-south transits. I was at the root. I was extremely disappointed to see that our rural service was discontinued after just six months of a pilot project. I hope that as Mohawk develops, we can make the case that we need to do it on a better, on a better connection level and working with local solutions.
You know, it's, that's a really important question. Every single day I get off that GOAT training, every single day I see empty buses. So there's something that's not working about this transit system right now. And even worse, that's one of the main reasons that this tax increase is going to come down on us in the next two years, 17.3% if you add them both up. So we should be doing what Innisville did. Innisville looked at the cost of a bus-based transit system, which was $680,000 versus a transit system provided by subsidized Uber, for $175,000, that's 25% of the cost. And a big reason they did that was because not only did it connect up urban Innisville, it connected up the entire rural Innisville area for the same amount of money. So they get a better transit system for way less money, and I just think we should be doing that and focusing on going forward with this and say, you know what, it's time to think of some innovative solutions here.
I'm going to basically echo what my colleagues have said. I believe that in order to be taken seriously as a municipality, you need to invest in transit. We complain about traffic, gridlock, air pollution, I mean, effective public transit will take care of those issues. But that's the key, where it has to be effective, and it has to be respectful of the tax dollars we're spending on it. So when we see empty buses or the pilot project to the rural area that didn't quite make fiscal sense right now, those require a revaluation in the future, you know, just like the mayor said, never is a long time. So I think it requires also a big change in behavior. So when you have people who are used to commuting in their personal vehicles, and now they've got to make this pretty significant switch to using public transit, that's going to require some time for the behavior to change before you see the true effect. So I don't think this story is over yet, and I can definitely say that I'm a supporter of an effective public transit system. My kids use it in town and regionally as well. Well, my expertise is in advocacy and representation, that's what I do to earn my living, and sometimes I don't even agree with my clients, but that doesn't mean I don't forcefully advocate for their position and their interests. That's my job, that's my job in my life, it would be my job on council as well. You guys know what you need more than anyone else. The counselor is there to be your voice to counsel. Basically, they're your liaison, your telephone line, to make sure that your interests and your needs are represented forcefully. Obviously, the whole point of this exercise is democracy, right? The representation element of democracy, that's why we're all here. And I can honestly say that I would just carry over my skills from my professional work into representing you in a democratic context.
Well, there were two rural issues that were narrowly defeated in a 6-5 vote. One was the rural representation going from the eight wards to four wards, and the other was the tax issue, going from a separated tax rate to a blended tax rate. Both of these were very close votes, 6-5, and sadly, sadly, we just did not have enough of the urban area could not see past their own self-interest in this particular one. Am I disappointed? Do I feel like I failed? Yeah, but I honestly think that I also gave it the very best shot that we had, I think we were just done like dinner. On the ward representation, I was able to convince two of my colleagues to change their vote and come forth to reconsideration, but sadly, we needed three counselors to change their vote, not just two.
So I would say, yeah, your counselor is your voice to the council, but I, if I were your counselor, I would rather go ahead that we should make some committees or subcommittees from the rural area, and they can put forward their decision, and we can put forward on the council level, and I would be a strong advocate for them. Thank you.
It's a tough question. I feel what happened was totally unfair. I've got to be honest, I don't know if we can reopen that issue, but I would certainly be open to reopening the issue of creating another rural ward. I don't know if that would be successful, but I would certainly be up for opening it up. I also believe there was an idea of a rural affairs committee that was floating around, I think we should be forming one of that. And most importantly, I will be strongly advocating for a differential tax rate, which I've had up on my website since day one, and I've posted examples from other municipalities where they have it. So I think the main thing we have to focus on in short term is differential taxation or no taxation without proper representation. So that would be step number one, so thank you. I have to be completely honest, I've seen the Hidden Quarry signs, I don't know about all the issues you're facing, but I'd really like to get to know the issue and do what I can to support you.
So the quarry issue, which we already discussed for that, but this North Quarry issue, the one we have discussed for that, I would certainly go and research for that, and since I am aware of that, I will strongly agree with the resident, what they need and what they vote for that. Thank you.
I have been a very strong advocate of the CRC efforts, and there are a couple of things that I've specifically done to support the CRC. One is that we did bring, I brought a notice of motion, and managed to get the town of Milton to make a significant contribution to one of the environmental studies for the Hidden Quarry. We brought, because although this is not in our, not in our municipality, and we are not even a commenting agency, it will affect North Nassau Guaia more than Well-Wellington, because this is where the water goes and where the water won't go. We brought the scale model that was prepared by the CRC to M.D.P. Harmville's office, and he was very, I believe you were very impressed with it, and it made a point. We brought it to the Grand River Conservation Board meeting, so that the members of the Grand River Conservation Board could actually see how it would impact. And every public information meeting that we have for the Nassau Guaia area, we also bring the CRC and the model to bring residents up to date, so still very much involved in that.
Thank you. So the short answer would be yes, of course I would support residents who are in opposition to the quarry. I think that part of the challenge with these types of things is getting a lot of people on board, so not just the people who might live in the local vicinity, but also explaining to the urban residents how it affects them as well, and of course, the water people and that sort of thing is kind of a position we can take to kind of bring more people into the fold to oppose. One of the developments that I was really happy with in this election with the change to campaign financing laws is that no candidates can take donations from corporations, including aggregate excavation and quarry corporations to, you know, maybe affect the integrity of their objectivity. So, yeah, again, to get back to my first point, yes, I would be in full support. So I actually just recently read the GTAA and NACAN report from 2015. You know, I'm well aware of the issue, and it is being monitored. I wonder if it might be, as I was reading the report, it sounds like they've actually possibly tried to reduce the number of residents affected, but the few residents who still are affected are impacted in a greater frequency. So there's going to be, I mean, there's going to be reviews and reports, and it does come back to a public consultation as well, so these concerns will be voiced and brought forward to the GTAA, absolutely.
I think all of us would agree that the primary concern here is airplane safety. No one would say that we should not have planes flying in a safe manner. That said, there's no reason why Milton should be sharing more of the pain than any other community. I brought a notice of motion, supported by the community, to council, asking that the GTAA install noise monitors at key locations, both in the rural area and in the urban area, to determine the level of noise that is in fact occurring for our residents. And I will be at that meeting as well tomorrow, and Olga and the group have been absolutely stellar in helping in bringing, in keeping this issue on the radar, and I give them absolutely full credit. But I also would like to say that our council is on board as well, and we'll see what that meeting has to say. Hopefully, there'll be some answers.
Certainly, noise is one of the cause of pollution, like noise pollution, it adversely affects the health, I strongly believe for that. But whereas council is concerned, I am of the view that this is a federal issue, council can just advocate for that. So GTAA, whatever the concern is, it should be dealt by the family, but whereas council is concerned, whoever will be in the council, they can advocate for that. I also attended that meeting of the council where Olga came over here, it was very well explained, and we strongly believe for that, that it is strongly affecting the community of the Ward One. But again, this is a federal issue, council can just advocate for that. Thank you.
I'd actually like to say that it's a problem in town too, and I don't know how many times I've been sitting in my backyard with an extremely low-flying plane that goes over my house, and just, I can't even hear myself thinking at that point. So it's a problem in town as well, and I certainly like to continue the work of our current council to see if we can tackle this. And I've also been working with Olga, my friend, and I'm not going to let you down.
Part of the job of the local council is to represent the local residents, and I was able to convene a meeting with the, with represented this, the four Milton Heights groups, repair groups, along with a number of the regional counselors and the mayor, to discuss how we could in fact move this forward, even though I don't have a direct influence with it. I think that that was part of my responsibility, and we did it, and hopefully it is moving forward. Now, the other part of it was, before we had this meeting, it was my understanding that there were some issues with the Niagara Skartman Commission. And I reached out to the Niagara Skartman Commission, a member that I know, a staff member, as well as a member of the board on the Niagara Skart Commission. And both of them said that they would be willing to look at the issue. Since then, I've learned that it isn't particularly a Niagara Skartman issue, but I still was willing to go that extra step to see how we could influence the provincial agencies as well. So we're there with you, feel your pain, and I'd like to be able to flush with you.
So that is, when I heard that if we have to spend $8 million, that this is a valid from on the part of council, yes, how they are going to spend for that. So on the other side, I would be thinking that every facility, when we are going for the, when we are taking the part of intake, we're giving us, giving us the tax, we are collecting the tax from the ruler. And when that comes a question for the reward, it is hard for the, there are logistic problems or we are, we know what are the synergies coming over here. So by, in my limited knowledge, I would rather say that if we are collecting tax from the ruler area, so we should spend the tax on their facilities, which you are collecting from them. That can be the solution, and we can go step by step according to the priorities of their facilities.
So again, it's a rural, or it's a regional issue, but my understanding of the problem is really the sewers have been blocked, not so much even by the financial aspect of it, but by overly complex bureaucracy and a system of policies that have prevented a developer from putting the sewers in for you. That's kind of my understanding of the problem. And I can't probably do much at the region except championate to counselors like Colin Best or other people, but I think we should be looking at this on a broader spectrum across the town, and demanding more from our developers, and making sure that they're putting in the infrastructure, that they're actually building something that benefits all of us. And also, cutting through that overly complex bureaucracy and making sure we're getting policies out of the way that are preventing common sense, affordable solutions. And I could just tell you, from my experience in construction, I mentioned earlier, $5 million, $8 million, this is a small project. This is not a big project, this is a very small project in terms of construction, and it's something that they should be able to undertake quite easily through our developers. So, thank you.
Well, this is an issue that I'm very familiar with, as my parents lived out in that area and I grew up there. I think it would be asinine to miss the opportunity to put in this project with a development coming in. I mean, the opportunity's right there in the taking. I understand there's complexities, there's bureaucracy and policies that we need to address, but, I mean, on a basic level, let's use some common sense. I mean, let's take advantage of the opportunity and get that done for those residents up there. I know that the residents in Milton Heights and through feel rather neglected from time to time. So, I mean, I'm on board, obviously.
Well, I really appreciate everybody coming tonight and taking an interest in politics. I think it's extremely important, and I'm always sad when I go to a door and somebody proudly stands up and says, "I don't vote and I'm never going to vote, so don't even waste my time." And I think to myself, that's terrible, because we've all got a duty to our society to be involved in this, and to get engaged in this, and to stand up and talk about the issues that really matter. So I really thank you for all your questions tonight and giving us the chance, all of us the chance, to address them for you. So if you gleaned anything from this, and hopefully I've come across well enough and put this across, I know how to build things. And what that means is, I know how to plan, I know how to execute, I know how to engage with engineers and the tradespeople, bring all the experts together in a room, and say, what's working, what's not working? What policies are preventing this building from going forward? What do you need from me financially to get this project going off the ground? This is our future, everything runs like this. Every organization runs like a building runs. So I think we need to look at our future here as an opportunity to change how we do business in the town, and to really bring that technical expertise and that knowledge of how to bring everybody together for a common purpose and really achieve something great. So hopefully you'll allow me to be the bridge between urban and rural, between both new and long-established residents alike, and hopefully you'll allow me to be your strong voice on council.
Well, I certainly want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I think that... I think that this is certainly the best-attended poll candidates meeting I would predict for the entire election from anywhere. And it's not, it doesn't surprise me, because our rural ward has always been very engaged. I'm also very impressed by the depth of the questions, the variety of the questions, and the very thoughtful way in which they have been presented. And I thank you very much for these questions and the opportunity to answer them. Rural Ward One is huge now. It goes all the way from Highway Seven all the way down to Dairy Road. And I think that the issues are complex. I think that experience will matter a great deal. I understand the rural area intimately, I understand the urban area very well as well. And I think that I would, and I would very much appreciate the chance to continue to be your strong voice on Milton Council. Take time to vote, as Chris says. There are people all over the world who are dying, literally, for that opportunity. So take your time, talk to your neighbors, and get out there and answer for us. Thank you very much.
So this is a time for diversity. I would really appreciate for all of you that you at least listen to our, you really saw your concern, and whatever we could deliver, we gave the answer. So this is the time we should go for the diversity, for the representation of the people who will be representing both from rural and urban area. It's not a matter of like, I went thousands of people, I met door to door, and I got a very good feedback. So I am not advocating that you should come only vote for me. I would advocate, and I would really appreciate, choose your right to vote. Because when we say we are Canadian, we should thoroughly evaluate the person who is the right candidate. Instead of just looking the track record of the people who are being elected again and again, I would suggest from the council level, I have put my name, and I would really, really appreciate, you should thoroughly evaluate me. If I'm the strong candidate and I can be your strong voice from Ward One, please vote for me. And I will, I will certainly give you my chance, and I will prove for your expectation. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to start by thanking everyone for coming out. It is an excellent showing, and it obviously shows that you care a great deal about your neighborhood, your neighbors, your families, and your town. One of my fears when I decided to run and I saw what was going on with Ward One was that this was going to end up being an election that was rural versus urban. And I have to say that a little bit of that still lingers. Part of what I would consider my job to be is to be a relationship builder, a communicator, and an advocate for the entire ward. I have interest in both areas, I have family in the rural area, I have family in the urban area, I have businesses in urban. We enjoy our time in the rural area. We're all in this together, we're all neighbors. We all have to remember to watch out for each other and to keep each other's best interests at heart always. At the same time, remembering that there are balance and different interests within the geographical area. So if you want a professional dedicated advocate to represent your interests across the entire ward, that of you, your family, and your neighbors, I sincerely hope that you'll consider giving me your vote on October 22nd. Thank you very much.